Good morning.
Thank you, Amanda. All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the Inland Wetlands Commission to order on October 27, 2025. This regular meeting, sorry, Dave. And the time is 7:04 PM. I'd like to start with introductions. Could we start on the screen with you, Nick? You have to unmute yourself.
Yep, I just realized that. Oh, gosh. Nick Sakamani, Commissioner.
Kevin Seaman, Inland Wetlands Commissioner.
Pat Parafort, Alterative.
Danielle Monroe, Chairwoman.
Chair, Retella, Commissioner.
Dave McCollum, Inland Wetlands Agent.
Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Thank you very much. At this time, Amanda, I would like to seat Pat Parafort for Nico Jordan. Thank you. All right. Are there any amendments or modifications to the agenda tonight?
I have a few, Madam Chair. If you don't mind, if you don't mind me, these will all be under staff reports. An agent approval for 33 Benedict Road. Member registrations for two conferences, one of them being CACIWC, and the other one being CAWS. And the last one being training incentives for you guys to follow up on a discussion we had from a previous meeting.
I would entertain a motion to add those items to our agenda under staff report.
Motion made.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, I hear a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call. Kevin?
I just said no.
I'm sorry. Hearing no discussion, I will call a vote. We overlapped a little bit. Would you weigh in with your vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Are there any other amendments this evening? All right. Thank you very much. Looks like we can move into our site plan review of 15 Great Pasture Road slash Zero Worcester Street.
Okay.
Good evening.
I have a draft resolution of approval for your guys' consideration, which I forward to you and to the applicant. Should have gotten a copy of that. And it's in front of you guys. You can take a minute to read it. I will also share it on the screen.
Did you see?
Oh, yeah.
Dave, did we get a copy of Danbury's letter of approval?
I was not able to acquire one. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Is it not available?
I'm not sure where it is, to be honest with you.
I think this is important.
Okay.
I'm just trying to.
I'm reading the email version of the draft as I've received it in the afternoon. So I'm reading through it right now. I did not have a chance to pre-read it.
Thanks, Kevin.
I can't find my file.
All right. Go to, go to, go to.
We may not need you to bring it up. Nick, did you receive the email with the draft resolution?
Yep, I did. I was briefly looking through it, but I've been in classes all day, so I've only gotten to about like page three of it.
Not, not a problem. Do you have access to it to read it through right now?
Hang on.
Yeah, I've got it.
Yep.
You'll have to pull it up if they've got it.
There we go. Everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir, Ken.
I'm picking up some background noise. If we could ask everybody on mute to just mute themselves.
Sure, sure.
Does anybody have any questions?
I think Pat raised a concern that he wanted to discuss, which Terry also wanted to weigh in on.
Okay.
I really would like to know what.
Give me just one more minute.
I really would like to know what the approval is from Danbury. If there are any concerns raised.
Okay.
Any concerns raised?
And, well, how do I say this? What do you think you was gleaned from that approval? As much as concerns?
I have no idea. I, you know, because it's most of the projects in Danbury.
Right.
I'd like to, what if they are doing something that, and not that I think they would, but let's go extreme. Let's say all of a sudden they're doing something that affects Duffel Side inadvertently negatively. You follow me?
Well.
Not that they would do so on purpose, or there might be something on there that we missed that's like, hey, that was a good idea. We should do the same thing. Once we approved this, we can't, I don't understand why we can't get Danbury's, you know, that concerns me. You'd think by now they would have a letter or something saying, yep, here you go, you know.
Right. Part of this falls on staff to have followed through with Danbury's EIC staff to ask for their approval, and that was not done. And I apologize for that. That, that being said.
Has the applicant received Danbury's letter?
If, if they had, I'm sure they would have forwarded that to us. I mean, Ted, Ted, no, you're, you're in your deliberations phase right now, so I don't know if that's, if it's appropriate to ask them while they're here. I.
I don't think they have.
Right. So, so that, that being said, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to try to track down something that doesn't even.
Right, no, I understand that. What's the timeline on this?
So, so the applicant has, has consented there to give you an extension through to tonight's meeting. You do have extension time left, but I, I'm not sure. You know, when you're so close to the finish line, what the.
Could put something in there approved pending review of Danbury's approval, or is that kind of wishy-washy?
It is wishy-washy.
And we're also not meeting again at the moment until November 24th, which I'm not sure how that would impact the timeline.
Well, A, you would have to get a consent from the applicant to continue this review past tonight's meeting, which considering you have a draft before you, I don't know.
I mean, I don't think Danbury would do anything intentionally inadvertently to, you know, but I'd like to see, you know, if we miss something.
Let's put it this way.
I mean, this whole application has been like, oh, well, Danbury, it's all Danbury. You can't do anything. It's all Danbury. I'd like to see what Danbury is doing.
Well, it's not, it's not that you can't do anything. If, if there was an activity, you know.
You know what I mean?
Right.
It kept getting pointed out that this is mainly Danbury. This is more of a quick approval for Bethel or whatever. Not so much quick approval, but there's not much affecting a lot. There's not a lot on the plate for Bethel. Still like to see what Danbury is doing and, you know, look behind the curtain, so to speak.
Right.
They, they might have caught something that we totally missed.
Well, let's, let's put this way. Let's put this way. When Danbury was rendering their decision, they didn't, I, I'm sure they would not have said, well, let's see what Bethel does before we render ours.
Yeah, because if it was reverse, it's a sliver.
Yeah, right. She's right. Danbury's is part of it and huge, and we're just a sliver. So that's why we'd like to know. I mean, I know they wouldn't say, well, let's see what Bethel said, but it's not that much of it. The, the land isn't that much in Bethel. It's mostly in Danbury.
Right, right. That's understood. And, and if, if the applicant was going to conduct any activity beyond what they were, what they've proposed to you, that would amount to any kind of impact to either the Alpenview area or to the Wetlands. They would have had to report it, report it. And, and there's no way they would have been able to get around that, either with myself or the DEEP, because that's ultimately where their reporting forms are going, regardless of where the activity is taking place. To, 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 to give a different perspective, let's say there weren't any weapons in Dan, in, in Bethel. You just had your Alpenview area. I, I, I would be saying the exact same thing. You know, in, in, in that, you know, you're, regardless of, of where the Wetlands are, the applicant still has to basically report what it is that they're doing. And yeah, Danbury's conditions may be, have, they may have a different flavor just because of the amount of work that's, that's taking place there. But, but you shouldn't take that as, you know, there being some oversight from, from, from what you guys have come up with just because of, of, of the scope of work. And, and, you know, to, to that effect, if there is something that changes between now and when construction ultimately starts, that they'll, they'll have to come back to you for an amendment anyway. And if, if it gives this board any reassurance, as soon as that EIC letter becomes public, I'll send it to you, Dex.
That's what I was going to say was if it comes, when it comes.
Yeah.
If we're going to request it when it comes, regardless of, of how this closes tonight with an approval or not. If, if commissioners are interested in reviewing that just from a curiosity standpoint, to see how other towns are handling issues, can we add that into an agenda?
Sure. No problem with that. I have absolutely no problem with that.
Because I don't, I, I have one voice, but I agree with you that it would be interesting to see what, what they came up with because it's always good to expand our knowledge. How do you feel, Terry?
I feel the same way. I think, I mean, they're here this evening for an approval. I think what we're.
They're here to receive our.
Yes.
Our decision.
Right.
And in the last meeting, when I called the minds of our commission, it was generally offered that we were moving that way.
The, the one tooth you also have is Todd Ritchie's review comments. They still have to be addressed. The engineer has to do that, or their engineer has to do that before we issue his own impairment. And if there are revisions on anything substantive as far as a change, it has to come back to you. So.
Does that make you comfortable? Okay. Is there more that you would like to?
No, I think that's a good answer.
Okay, great. Thank you. Pat, is there more that you wanted to discuss? Kevin, is there anything that you wanted to bring to the table to discuss over this?
No, I've been listening very intently and I'm, I'm in agreement. Because if anything does change or need to be amended, it needs to come before us anyways, and we've been privy to the, what's called the construction plans as they stand. So any alterations to those will need to come before us anyway. So that gives me a little bit of, oh, what's it called? It takes.
Kevin, your mic is cutting in and out. I think the gist of what you said was that what we discussed here, you're in alignment with, and you understand that if there were substantive changes that they would come back and that you're comfortable?
Correct.
Great. Sorry to rephrase you. It's just you're coming in and out. Nick, did you have comments?
I am in agreeance with Kevin. However, I know in the, the email chain that Nico had left us some stuff that he wanted.
And Nick, we're, yep, and Nick, we're not going to read that into the discussion tonight, and, and I'm happy to talk to you about that outside of session.
Okay, yeah, no problem. I just wanted to make sure that, that that was at least like said, just so, because Nico, Nico's out of class tonight, so.
Yep. So as he's not in attendance, he's, he's not able to vote tonight. I will say that if you, that if you have comments that you want to make a part of the discussion, then I welcome you and invite you to do so.
Uh, no, I'm in agreeance with Kevin. So I'm, I'm good on this.
Okay. Thanks very much. Okay, well, if there's no further discussion, then I guess that I can entertain, oh, I have to get my notes.
Does anyone have any questions about the conditions that were dropped?
That's what I thought we were talking about. No, you could.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, absolutely. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Terry, yeah, good. Pat, Kevin?
No, I'm fine. I'm good.
Nick?
Good.
Okay. All right. Then I would entertain a motion to approve. This is where I'm looking for that beautiful language that you gave me, and I'm not finding it. The resolution for approval for 15 Great Pasture Road with, I, I would entertain a motion to approve the application for regulated activities at 15 Great Pasture Road slash Zero Worcester Street with the following conditions. Want me to read them all in, or can I just name number them?
Um, I think it's worth reading them in now.
All right. We start with miscellaneous, yes?
Yep.
Uh, on the second page.
Dave, did it? Have you read it when you're ready? Show them on the monitor. Can't we just say?
If, if, if you want to just list the numbers, then that's up to you. I would be comfortable either way.
I'm comfortable with that because they're all outlined here. Are commission members all comfortable with that?
As they were shown on the screen?
Yes, as they were shown on the screen with conditions as they were shown on the screen and distributed to commission members. Enforcement guidelines one and two, erosion and sediment control numbers three through five, miscellaneous six through 10. And based on the following reasons, one and two. Do I hear a motion for that?
Motion so made.
All right. I hear a motion from Terry. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I hear a second from Nicholas. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call a vote. Kevin?
I am in favor.
Nick?
Of approval.
I am also in favor of approval.
Name.
Yes. Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all for the discussion. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is 13 Pleasant Street. Mr. Bruno, are you here to present that for us this evening?
Uh, I, I am. I, Mike just said that we were waiting for the town's engineers to comment, so he felt like there wasn't going to be much happening tonight. Is that accurate, Dave?
That is, that is correct. We are still waiting for engineering review comments to come in from Todd Ritchie, SLR International Corporation. I only submitted my review comments to Mr. Mazuko late last week, so I would totally understand if he doesn't have a response to those ready for tonight. That being said, if, if you guys have any questions that you'd like to air, either to Mr. Bruno, to myself, or just for the record in general, it's still worth doing that tonight, so you're not delaying that discussion for another meeting. I don't expect, I, I'm not going to speak pride, but I, I don't expect to have anything in the way of substantive review comments that would prompt having to discuss this application beyond the next meeting. I do expect that he'll have his, I, I would hope he has his review comments to my, by the end of this week. And that Mr. Mazuko would be able to sufficiently address any comments that Mr. Ritchie has in time for your next meeting on the 24th. If you have any feedback for staff in the meantime, let me know so I can prepare accordingly for that meeting.
Thank you. So to jog memories, we did do a sidewalk on this location. You recall? You were there.
It's a crest from Big Y. That Pleasant Street?
No.
That's Redwood.
Okay, where's Pleasant?
Pleasant, Pleasant Street is the site over off of Fleetwood Avenue.
Like Reservoir Street to Pleasant, Pleasant Street and wraps around.
It's, it's close to the.
You weren't there.
Okay.
And Nick? When did we do that sidewalk? Nick, were you on that sidewalk?
I believe I was.
No.
No.
I remember Nico there, and I believe Kevin was there. Were you, Kevin?
I do not believe I was there. I was at the sidewalk across the street from Big Y, and then I missed the one thereafter.
Yeah. That was. That's Redwood. Okay.
I think we only had three numbers. I think we had Terry, you, and Nico.
That's right. What? I remember Nico and Terry there. Okay.
And yes, you're right. Was there any joke photos which were shared on the Google Drive that we were able to review?
Drive, yep, and there might even be video there.
Yeah, the, the meeting recording.
Yes, there is.
On YouTube webpage.
So I would encourage you both, since you were unable to make the sidewalk, to review that before we have our next meeting, so you can get a lay, or all three of you, excuse me, to get a lay of the land and, and, you know, have some exposure to what the project looks like. Okay.
I already took a cursory review out, and I will further in depth go as well.
Okay. So I don't have any comments yet. I'd like to review more materials as they come in. So I'm good for tonight. Pat?
I'm good.
You're good.
Kevin?
Agreed.
Nicholas?
Yep, I'm in agreeance.
Okay. Then do I have, do I take a motion to continue the discussion? Okay.
You can just state.
We will continue discussion of 13 Pleasant in our next regular meeting on November 24th.
Um, it does say here, period, end, 11/23.
So, so that was, so that was a mistype on DAF's part, because this was accepted on the 22nd, not the 19th. So your 65-day review period actually ends on the 26th.
Beautiful.
Not the 23rd. So you will have time.
Late is good.
And talk about it on the 24th. We may have to ask for an extension then, because we're not going to get through that discussion and be able to vote on it in that same evening.
Well, let, let me put this to this way. To be proactive, staff can have draft, draft decisions ready for the commission for that meeting. And if there's any language that needs to be added, we can do it at that time. I, like I said, I, I would hope Mr. Ritchie would have his review comments redressed by the applicant way in advance of that meeting, so there's time for it.
You may not know the answer to this yet, because I realize that it's a month out, but do you have a sense for how long the agenda is for that evening at this point?
Uh, well, barring any events or any items that may come in, it would just be 13 Pleasant Street and the other item that
We are getting to.
You're going to accept, which is 7 Rockwell Road.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Does anyone have any comments?
Uh, I just want to confirm what Dave said, that if there's a draft resolution, we can always make amendments or add stipulations and approve based on the fact that those stipulations will be added, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. If, if, you know, just, just, just because, you know, you're, you're, it's, it's no different than the draft that was just presented to the board this evening. If there's an amendment you want to make, you can make.
Yep. Yep. No, that's what I thought. I expected as much. I was just saying it out loud to validate.
Understood.
And, you know, pulling the emergency cord, I think if we're not ready to render a decision because we feel like we have more discussion to be had, we can request an extension at that time.
Absolutely.
Review it further if, if the applicant will, will offer that to us.
And it's worth noting that your December meeting comes early.
Right, on the 8th. So very soon after.
So that would work in the applicant's favor if they, if an extension was needed.
I'm comfortable with it. Yeah. All right. Any other discussion or questions or clarifications? All right. Then I suggest that we move on to new business. Mr. Bruno, thank you for joining us tonight. You're welcome to hang out. I love the meeting so much that you want to stay.
Thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right. So moving along to new business, we have number seven Rockwell Road.
Yes. So neither the advocate nor their counsel are able to join us tonight. That being said, I, I would discourage any lengthy discussion on this. There's still some background items that staff wants to confirm with council that can be incorporated into the record. I, I, I'm pretty confident what, what they're going to say, but I would just rather have something to that effect in writing before anything else gets added. What I can offer to you at this time is that, actually, I, I wouldn't know how to, I wouldn't know how to articulate that. So I'll just let what was submitted speak for itself. And unfortunately, I only have. There's only one copy.
Well, yeah, I have many copies. I don't think we're talking about it.
That's okay.
I don't want to read that whole thing anyway.
It's, it's, and it's on, it's on the website.
It's, it's on the website.
Okay. So what's the status of it?
We're receiving an application.
So, so, so there is, there is an app, so you are, you are accepting an application for regulated activities to, for items that have been on the, that have been before the commission last year or the year before.
Time has gone by.
Right. So also, the, the, the two biggest things you need to do tonight, one of which is figure out whether or not you want this to be a public hearing, and staff recommends that you schedule a sidewalk.
Yes. And would you be the kindness
Okay.
of clarifying for the commission the nuanced differences between this and other applications that we've had the pleasure of accepting and reviewing? Because this is different because we have.
So, so there is, it, it's, it's worth noting that the commission received a petition to intervene by verified pleading. That part is Mr. Blanchett, who is here tonight. He has, by submitting his petition, he has the same rights to offer testimony and participate in the application process as an applicant. I offer my comments that I gave, my generalized comments, you know, to him the same way that I would to you guys. You, you're looking just to really accept this and schedule a sidewalk.
Dave, when we normally accept an application, we make sure it's complete. This one complete, in the history has shown with this application.
Thank you, Pat.
Here's, here's my response to this, okay? And, and this is, this is a good question, and I have my feedback on, from council has has changed how I would respond to that. You should always accept an application on the basis that it's easier to substantiate something that's been incomplete after you present the applicant the opportunity to not give that information than trying to do that. And I know.
So it can be a part of the review process that we identify that the application is incomplete.
Right, right, right.
All right. Let me phrase it this way. Is there enough, do you feel there is enough to warrant accepting an application at this time?
Um, you have an application form. You have, you have, you know, a. you know, a report from a soil scientist, you have a description of what the proposed activities are as to how thorough that is or whether or not the applicant can demonstrate, you know, uh, what they're proposing to do in light of what your charges are. That will be determined by you guys as we go through the process. Of course, the applicant understands, you know, they're going to have, you know, the intervenor may choose to submit their comments based on what's been submitted. I certainly will do that as your staff. Um, you know, any other parties that you want to have comments from, they can submit those as well.
Okay.
Uh.
Can we, by accept the application, can we also have it automatically forwarded to our engineer or?
Yeah, if you'd like Mr. Ritchie to review this application, absolutely.
I'd like him right from the start.
Yeah, agreed. That was the first thing on my mind. I'd like to be proactive with all that side of it because this is a redundant dead dead horse. You know what I mean? So that's in agreement with everything Pat has said.
Let me pause the conversation for just a moment. Is this a discussion that we should be having before we even?
Well, we're accepting the application.
Right. I'm just asking procedure whether we have this conversation now or whether we have it after we have a motion on the table.
As long as, I, I would just discourage any technical discussion tonight, right?
We don't have anything to technically discuss.
Well, no. You have the application.
Do you want to review that now?
Nope. I'll review it now. Mr. Blanchett, do you have anything?
Actually, we're gonna hold off on that for a moment.
Okay, hold on for a second.
Um, if it is okay with you, Mr., well, I'm hoping that it will be okay with you, Mr. Blanchett. I wanted to curb conversation around the nitty gritty details of this application until after the applicant has had a chance to actually offer it to us for discussion. And with, you know, the full awareness that we welcome your input in the process as well. Does that?
This is a third problem and again, it's input on accepting the application.
Or accepting it for review.
Okay. I don't know how it all works with this three, you know.
It's like, we're accepting it for review and not accepting it like, yes, this is okay, go ahead.
You can look at it real quick.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing right now.
Yes, I will.
It's only wrinkled. An intervenor adds to your review processes, they have the same vested. That was, that's the word. They have, they have, um, the same rights as an applicant to offer comments.
I'm okay asking how he feels about the application being submitted.
Why don't you take a look at it first?
Okay.
I've.
Okay. Terry, you're welcome to look over my shoulder on this. I'm sorry, gentlemen, I can't put this up on the screen for you, but it's in the drive, so you can look at it yourself or it's not?
It's not even on the drive. It's online.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can't, I can't find it in the drive.
And quickly, if I'm wrong, did you email it to us?
I did not.
You didn't? No, no. Yeah, I'm looking at something else.
We're going to guide you to that right now.
Thank you. I.
Because this is an excellent question and a good time to address it.
So this is just, okay, can I move forward? Yes, thank you.
Um, can everybody see my screen?
Oh, you're gonna put it up there? Yes.
Okay, so for application documents going forward, you're going to scroll to the Planning Design Department webpage of our website. And you can either go over here to the pending applications or you can go over here. Either way, you'll be able to scroll down to a section of the page dedicated just to this board. And you may not be able to see it so clearly on that screen, but uh these are the applications that are presently before you or about to be accepted. And here are all the documents that you've received today. Okay? So everything from going forward, uh, all of your documents will be on this website. We are not doing Google Drive.
Thank you.
And the.
You're very welcome.
Is the link is right on the agenda and it's clickable in the email.
Thank you. I usually look at that ticket.
She makes it so easy.
And this hyperlink will never change.
Yeah.
Okay, so no matter where you are, all you have to do is remember the bethel-gt.gov/pendingapplications and you'll get here every time.
I just gotta remember me and this phone number.
We'll just bring her flowers.
Please don't harass staff.
I don't harass them.
No, no.
She's always having to see you.
My first question?
Yes.
On the thing that you can't see because I'm holding your coffee? Is on the third page?
Okay.
Where it says anticipated commencement date of 3/31/16 and anticipated completion date of 4/15/24?
I, I don't want to, um.
They'll have to address it.
I, right. I think that's the simplest way to respond to that is, is if those, if those dates were filled incorrectly, then the applicant will have to address what they need.
I don't understand all of the not applies there either, but okay. Not applicable.
Uh, again, for whatever the applicant has admitted or has not submitted, you guys will have plenty of opportunity to address.
No.
Oh, good.
Well, this is, this speaks directly to what you were asking.
Mm-hmm.
The application checklist with the checkbox is you check those off or the applicant?
That's the applicant advising what has been submitted.
Got it. Nick and Kevin, are you reviewing this on, on your screens?
Yes.
Yes, I'm doing it on my screen individually.
Great, thanks. Just checking in to make sure we were all on the same page and looking at it. Are we good here? Yeah, the information that you need, do the information that you need.
Ooh, I didn't understand that, but okay.
This is right, instructions for how to do it, which you're welcome to look at. Good, or you want to read?
No, I'm good because.
That's our stuff.
What I was.
Yeah, this is just instructions for anyone that's applying what they're supposed to do. So that's all in our.
It's just like repair.
It says area of repair.
Okay.
So going down Rockwell Road, going towards Plum Trees Road. Is this the property on the left-hand side?
One dirt spot.
This is where 302 is. Yep.
On the right.
So you're coming this way?
You were coming up.
Okay, so that's where this, well, I'm going to start back. Okay.
Yep.
It's kind of down, so you really can't see it.
We will do a sidewalk. Good. Good. Sorry, these pages are hard to tell whether.
This is back to 23.
Yep. Just not to rush you.
What is that word?
Powell Street?
Powell Street. All right.
Okay, I'm gonna really download this.
Yeah, I can't read it.
Because I need. That's fine. Yeah, and that's fine. I'm, I'm looking through this just to familiarize myself because obviously, I mean, just like we, you know, we're gonna discuss and get into the weeds on all of this. Yes, but this is different than what was here a long time ago. So we're gonna review all of this for sure. But we didn't have this to look at.
Okay, before.
What is the date on that, Adam, Joe?
Yeah, uh, this is October 15, 2023, from Mr. McEnnis.
Did we?
Yes.
Maybe did, yes.
Okay, my mistake. Oh, it's the same report?
It's the same.
Yeah, that's the same report, but the application filing was October 6th.
Well, I'm gonna download it and take my time and really read through it.
Okay.
Remember. The bridge, that's not a bridge.
So this is the water horse and this is the property.
Right.
And this is the. This is not a bridge, as Pat was pointing.
Did it get a little away?
I, no. I would.
I know, I know. Hilljoy.
Dave, how do you determine for the public hearing if they're not presenting what the application is? You know what I mean? That was just my only question.
Right.
I don't understand the question.
We're, we're. I probably shouldn't be talking to you right now, so, but my understanding is that what, we're curious about this because we've been having these conversations for a long time and we're reviewing it. And generally speaking, the commission members review these things in advance of a meeting so that we come prepared for a discussion. Because the applicant is not here to present this, we're just doing that on our own. Normally, we would be listening to that, but we're, as you know, just, just reviewing it to accept it for review, basically.
I, I would say if for some reason the commission does not elect to use the public hearing process at this, during this meeting, the public can submit 25 signatures within 14 days of this meeting and that automatically triggers.
Yes. Can you back up for a second? I would love for you to say that, but can I pre?
Sure.
Can I preface that first?
Okay.
For commission members that haven't been here for a long time and for those who have and don't need my review. We're looking at this tonight to determine whether we are going to accept it for review. We have two choices. We can accept it for site plan review, which is what we usually do, or for public hearing, which is a longer process and it invites the public into it. If we choose to review it for site plan review, which is the shorter in-house process, Dave was saying that the public still has the opportunity, go ahead.
To submit 25 signatures in the petition within 14 days of tonight's meeting.
Which would then trigger a public hearing. So we would change course and we would review it under the public hearing protocols instead of the site plan review protocols. And we haven't done a public hearing protocol while you've been a member of the board, I don't believe, nor you, Nick. So I'm just clarifying that difference since you haven't been here for that experience yet.
Right.
Thank you.
Usually when they, an applicant, like we're going through, accept the application, the applicant's usually in front of us explaining it. Is there a reason? I know there's special circumstances here, long process. Is there a reason they're not here tonight?
I can't speak why the property owner isn't here, but their counsel has a previous, they have a scheduled conference.
Okay.
Otherwise, they would have been here.
What was that?
I don't think that it was dated. So there's some photos here. I'm sorry, I'm looking at your photos.
It's okay.
They're a little hard to turn. So this is still the applicant's property and this is the waterway and these are the neighbors over here. Um, this is a photograph of some things that were happening on the applicant's property.
So somebody came and filled that in.
We're not gonna discuss what's going on.
I would say those technical questions for.
We will discuss.
Okay.
But it's a photograph of the applicant's property and there's the water horse there. And here's, this is the applicant's property. Here's the water horse. There's a lot of photographs here. It's very similar. These are from our sidewalk, I believe.
Uh, they very well may be, yes.
Yeah, those are old photos. Those, those preexisted.
Did you go take photos of this?
I, I have not been to, I have not been back to the site. I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm done reviewing. I'm ready to discuss. When ready, you let me know.
Feel free to open the discussion, Kevin, if you've got stuff that you would like to bring into the conversation. But remember that we're just discussing whether we're accepting it for site plan review or public hearing or rejecting it, I suppose, is an option.
Uh, 100%. Um, also, I would like to, based on our decision, I would like to highly recommend that we also schedule a sidewalk after we render our decision, if possible, because this is a potent long drawn out item and it's been quite some time. I think it'd prove us to do so.
Let's clarify the language, uh, real quick here. You're not rendering a decision on this tonight.
Right.
You're just choosing the.
We're choosing to review it under one of two processes.
Review process.
Yep, yep. No, I'm, I'm frightened and I'm ready to weigh in when we're ready to do so.
Okay, and I, I think we're all in agreement that we would like to add a sidewalk to it when we get that party, if we accept it.
Yes, definitely.
Any other discussion on, Kevin? Would you, would you like to weigh in? I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot, but you raised your hand, so now you're in it. Do you want to weigh in on your, on public, um, hearing versus site plan review? Because that's.
I would like to accept this as a public hearing.
Okay, can you, can you give a little bit of insight into why that's the way that you're leaning?
Yeah, you, you have to have a reason.
Yep, no, that's fine. Yep, I believe that downstream effects of this particular project can affect a broader community. And more of the public as it is not residing, the downstream effects are not particular to that one residence in question.
Okay.
So there are various, Dave's gonna pull it up, but there are very specific reasons that we have to utilize if we're gonna put it for a public hearing. What page is that to do?
This is section 43.
43. So I don't know if you have our regs in front of you, Kevin. Can I read this into them?
Sure.
Yeah, please read it. I don't have it in front of me and I know what you're looking at right now. I just don't have it in front of me currently.
No worries. Public hearings, prerequisites for a public hearing. The commission shall not hold a public hearing on an application unless, A, the commission determines that the proposed activity may have a significant impact on wetlands or water forces. B, a petition signed by at least 25 persons who are 18 years of age or older and who reside in Bethel requesting a hearing is filed with the commission not later than 14 days after the date of receipt of such application. We are not currently in possession of that. Well, that would, that would be triggered. No one has filed a petition.
That's correct.
But they, but the public would have 14 days after we, if we chose to accept this for site plan review, the public would have 14 days to submit a petition as long as it contains 25 signatures from Bethel residents who are over the age of 18. That would trigger us to change to a public hearing. Did that make sense?
Yes, and I think it's quite clear that option A is where my. Yes, and I think it's quite clear that option A is where my standpoint is because it has a direct impact on waterways.
Okay, that's fine. I'm gonna read the other two just to have them also here in the record.
That is okay. That is okay.
The commission finds that a public hearing regarding such application would be in the public interest. Or, and/or D, the commission has determined that a core activity as defined in these regulations may have a significant impact on wetlands or watercourses and will automatically schedule a public hearing in order to expedite the application process. It wouldn't expedite.
Yeah, it, it's, it's worth noting that 431D, um, it does not hold as much weight as the other three options do. Options, or 1A, 1B, and 1C are based on the state's model regulations. So I, if, if you are going to use any reason, you should consider using those over option D.
Thank you.
Well, I think, and my personal opinion, as I would like to state for myself, that it has a direct impact to waterways and it impacts the public. Therefore, both are eligible, whichever you feel is the best one to stand by, I'll, I'll agree with that.
It's, it's the board's decision as a whole, ultimately, but.
I see you.
Okay.
But it's, it's worth clarifying what a significant impact is, so that way, um, it can be flushed off for the record. Significant impact as defined in your regulations is, and I quote, "Any activity including but not limited to the following activities which may have a major effect. One, any activity involving deposition or removal of material which will or may have a substantial effect on the wetland or watercourse or on wetlands or watercourses outside of the area for which the activity is proposed. Two, any activity which substantially changes the natural channel or may inhibit the natural dynamics of a watercourse system. Three, any activity which substantially diminishes the natural capacity of an inland wetland or watercourse to support aquatic plant or animal life and habitats, prevent flooding, supply water, assimilate waste, facilitate drainage, provide recreation or open space, or perform other functions. Four, any activity which is likely to cause or has the potential to cause substantial turbidity, siltation, or sedimentation in a wetland or watercourse. Five, any activity which causes substantial diminution of flow, diminution, excuse me, of flow of a natural watercourse or groundwater levels on the wetland or watercourse. Six, any activity which is likely to cause or has the potential to cause pollution of a wetland or watercourse. Seven, any activity which, which damages or destroys unique wetland or watercourse areas or such areas having demonstrable scientific or educational value."
Okay, I know, Kevin, did you get all of that?
Period. I did get all of that. Please do not ask me to recite all of that, but it is quite different that six out of seven, if you will, of those stipulations directly are associated with what's in front of us today. So as a board, we could decide which one we want to utilize. I'm comfortable with any of those.
It's not a one with another. You just need to say for the record that you would recommend this for public hearing review based on the fact that you saw however many direct, potential direct impacts, that there was a significant impact.
Significant activity.
Significant activity that would impact, would have an impact on the water force. So there were seven things that were read off there. Any numbers stand out to you, Kevin?
One through four, I believe it was. There might be five, but we can go items one through four.
I think that's sufficient.
I have one, two, four, five, and seven.
Okay, well, we'll get to you in a second. Nick has had his hand up. Nick?
Okay, so I finished reviewing and I'd also like to submit this for public hearing. The reason being, uh, due to my fortunate experience, I've actually sampled a lot of Lime Kiln Brook. I've walked in it. I've been around it. So I do know a little bit about the biodiversity index and the species already currently living there. And I do believe that this project can have substantial impacts on biodiversity, including macro invertebrates and amphibians. Um, so I think that the public should be notified of this because it will impact further downstream.
Okay, that was very concise. Thank you, Nick. Good, good. Pat?
I mimic what Kevin said. I think, uh, it affects downstream, upstream, and left and right. So I would put in for a public hearing based on 431A with the impact being as noted in our regulations.
What page were those on?
Uh, 431 prerequisites for public hearing.
No.
Oh, that the, um, significant, significant impact?
Yes.
Okay, uh, that definition is under section 2.2 and that's on page nine of your regulations.
So I would say, based on, uh, public hearing out of 44.31A and the impacts being, uh, 2.2, 1, 2, 4, 5, and 7. Does that make sense?
For the definition of significant impact.
For the definition of significant impact.
Thank you. Terry?
Well, no, I mean, without going through the numbers, that definitely impacts where the whole, where that whole group goes.
So for starters, are you suggesting that we should review this for a public hearing or is that the number view? Okay, based on significant impacts?
Absolutely.
Okay, on some of these points that Dave read in, do I need her to identify some?
It's helpful, but actually, no, let me, let me put it to you this way. In your, when you ultimately make a motion.
Yeah. Then we'll have to come together on them. Okay, that's fine. Okay, I think everyone has spoken. I too would recommend this for, um, a public hearing, um, based on significant impact, so 43A. And I think that we should discuss which, so now I'm gonna start reading these and just kind of do a, a show of hands as to whether we feel, would you mind recording the numbers for me?
Sure.
Thanks, sir. I guess I can ask Kevin too, but you're on the screen, so you're not gonna be secretary for me for a minute here. Um, alright, so I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna read the significant impacts that Dave read out and I'd like you guys to all just listen to them and then weigh in on whether you think that that applies so we can kind of put it down with clarity. All right, is that, can I say that in a?
Yes.
Understandable way?
Understood. Yep, understood.
Good, Terry? Good. Okay, cool. So significant impact, number one, any activity involving deposition or removal of material which will or may have a substantial effect on the wetland or watercourse or on wetlands or watercourses outside of the area for which the activity is proposed. Do we generally feel like that might apply?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, it applies.
Okay, number two, any activity which substantially changes the natural channel or may inhibit the natural dynamics of a watercourse system.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Number three, any activity which substantially diminishes the natural capacity of an inland wetland or watercourse to support aquatic, plant or animal life and habitats, prevent flooding, supply water, assimilate waste, facilitate drainage, provide recreation or open space, or perform other functions.
Yes.
Yes.
Number four, any activity which is likely to cause or has the potential to cause substantial turbidity, siltation, or sedimentation in a wetland or watercourse.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yes.
Number five, any activity which causes substantial diminution of flow or, um, sorry, diminution of flow of a natural watercourse or groundwater levels of the wetland or watercourse.
Yes.
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 Number six, any activity which is likely to cause or has the potential to cause pollution of a wetland or watercourse.
Absolutely.
No question.
Yes.
Kevin? Pat?
Cause pollution?
Uh, uh, yes.
Okay, yes.
Yes. Okay, and number seven, any activity, I'm sorry? Number seven, any activity which damages or destroys unique wetland or watercourse areas or such areas having demonstrable scientific or educational value.
Yes.
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 All seven.
I'll go with yes.
So it has been spoken. Okay, so based on the potential impacts, one through seven.
You, you should, you should.
I know we're gonna craft a motion, but just making sure that we have covered all of the bases before we craft said motion.
Yeah, uh, yeah, yes, you have.
All right, so then, is there more discussion before I start to try to jumble together the motion for one of you to propose?
I'm good, have fun.
Hearing none. Thanks, this is why I get the big bucks. All right, I would entertain a motion to accept this application for 7 Rockwell Road under public hearing based on prerequisite A and significant impacts one through seven in our guidelines.
prerequisite A of what section?
Prerequisite A of 4.3 prerequisites for public hearings based on the conditions of significant impact one through seven as outlined in 2.2 of our regulations.
For significant impact.
For significant impact.
Motion made.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call a vote, starting with the screen, Kevin?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries. The application has been accepted for public review.
And you want, if you want to schedule sidewalks?
Yes, we would like to schedule a sidewalk.
Would you like to go?
We'll just schedule a sidewalk after the applicant comes in.
Okay, so you want the public hearing to open first?
Oh, anything at, um.
May I?
Yes, please.
Exploring options? I understand what you're saying and I under, I think I understand what both of you are saying. Is it, do we have an idea when we're, oh, we wouldn't hear from them for a presentation before a meeting, would we?
Right, so, so.
This is the presentation.
So your next regular meeting is scheduled for November 24th. Barring any special meetings you may schedule for that applicant and considering the timeframe that you now have to adhere to for public hearings, in other words, legal notices have to go out, if powers notices have to go out.
Right.
You shouldn't, shouldn't schedule any public hearing to open until after those requirements are satisfied. But you should schedule a sidewalk before that, okay?
But let's schedule a sidewalk.
We need permission from.
Yeah, we get that as part of the process.
So, so the applicant's counsel has told me, whatever date works for you, he will make sure his client is there. So.
Noted.
Whatever date you guys come up with, that's.
I'm gonna get out my device so that we can start talking about schedules and we can review that and just make a note for the record that that's what we're doing on that. Okay.
Already know.
And let's do.
I'm looking at the calendar right now. Keep in mind, we lose daylight savings time in the very near future.
Yes, and also we're in a drought right now, which is going to change conditions there and it's gonna continue to get colder, no matter how much precipitation we have.
And then the, and the time change.
Yep.
We have to do it. We should do it on a Saturday.
I, I would say, well.
Or Sunday.
If it's, if it's possible, um, for somebody to, uh, either FaceTime me or phone me in, I would really like to be present for this.
Can we do that or do we just take the recording and offer it?
It's difficult for me, Nick, because I'm already trying to record the meeting on my phone to watch it through YouTube, so I don't know if I could do it.
So I'll handle, I, I don't mind doing that. I'll plan, and I plan on being in attendance.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, awesome. Thank you, guys.
Sure, um. How do you feel about a Saturday? I know it's not your favorite thing.
Whatever the commission needs, that's, I'm at your service.
Well, you're retired, so you don't get a vote. I just decided. No, of course you get a vote. Um, Kevin, your schedule, wait, yeah, no, Pat's definitely not fired. Nick, when did you say you're back in town again?
I will be back, uh, on December the 5th.
Gotcha, not soon enough. Um, Kevin, when does your workday end?
Uh, I'm pretty flexible from a workday perspective, given I don't have meetings, so workdays I could be flexible with. Uh, weekends will be tough. I'm away three out of four weekends in November.
I have a weird schedule, so I will just say that I could be available in the early afternoon on a Tuesday, anytime after two, so like, say, 2:15, I could be at a site on a Tuesday, or on a Thursday, I could be there between, say, 10:15. I, I need to be done by before two, I guess, basically. So I can make those times work, but I don't know if those of us that have jobs besides me can make those times.
I can pretty much make my own hours, so.
So you could be flexible.
I would hope for the board's sake, we don't have to be there for, for longer than 30 minutes.
Right, so those are, so Tuesday afternoon, early afternoons and Thursday mornings are times that I reserve for other purposes and I will not be at work, so I can make those work. Would those be okay for you?
I would really appreciate you scheduling it during business hours. That works very well.
Understood. Kevin, would that be something that you could make happen?
That's actually quite easier for me, to be honest. Those times specifically are easier for me, ironically, because Tuesday afternoons or Thursday after 10:00 AM. So both your times are perfect.
Okay.
I would have a slight preference for Thursdays, but if Tuesdays work better, so be it.
Thursdays are fine for me. It's just gotta be like 10:15 is the soonest that I can be there.
Perfect.
And 10:15 would be great because it's on my, because it's between the two places that I'm going.
David's free.
Okay.
He's, he's free all, all Thursdays.
All of the Thursdays?
Uh-huh. But the 20th, but it's before, okay, yeah, so, all the Thursdays.
All right, let me just make sure that I.
So it may be said.
So it shall be.
So it has been spoken.
We could do Thursday at 10:15 is really good for me, to be honest. I could, that, that time is very good for me.
Why don't we shoot for 10:30?
Yeah, that's fine.
Day the 6th.
Actually, could I vote for the 13th?
Fine, by me.
I have a thing on the 6th.
Say the 13th and we're talking about what.
10:30 on the 13th, is that what you said? Uh, Kevin, you said that works?
Yes, it does.
7 Rockwell Road and one wetlands.
She's good, you're good. Okay, let's, let's do it.
And what time did we say?
10:30.
Sure.
Do we need to make a motion?
You should, yes.
All right, I would entertain a motion to schedule a site walk at 7 Rockwell Road at 10:30 AM on November 13th.
Motion made.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, a second.
Second. You're gonna have time to post?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Nicholas?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Aye, aye, so moved. I mean, motion carries, one of those things.
You got it.
Okay, wonderful. Are we done with 7 Rockwell then?
I believe so.
Okay.
Oh, 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 um, actually, one last thing.
Yes.
When do you want the public hearing to open?
Next meeting.
November 24th.
Okay, very good.
Yes? Is there a reason why we wouldn't have it open on November 24th?
Oh, no, you have 65, uh, actually, no. You only have 35 days to open. This is, uh, this is wetlands, not PNC, but you still have to state for the record what date you're gonna open your public hearing.
Like to stay for the record that we will open the public hearing on November 24th at our next regular meeting.
Very good.
Great, thank you. Okay, then we are moving on to new business. No, that is new business. Now we are moving on to approval of our regular meeting minutes. We have three of them to approve tonight. Uh, so I would entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from 9:22, 25, as written.
Mits were made.
Any, uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Also, okay, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from our meeting on 10/6/25. Oh, we don't have enough people here to do this. The only people who were in attendance were me and Terry and Nico. So can we still vote on it or do we need to table it for another?
I listened to the whole thing.
Okay, thank you. I would enter, that, that counts, right?
Yes, that's.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from ten, six, as written. So, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, and I will also entertain.
Cause I'm, I'm sorry, yes, is, are, is anyone abstaining from this?
They're, they weren't here for it, so they, so, oh, they have to abstain.
Yeah.
Mr. Seaman and Mr. Sir Money would have to.
Okay.
How would it stain?
Okay.
Yeah, I abstain.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump the shark.
That's okay. So that would be three, zero, two.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
No, I'm asking Amanda who's scribbling.
I'm good.
I'm trying not to make her life harder, but I'm.
No, you're fine, good.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from ten twenty as written. Who was in attendance on ten twenty?
That would have been the special meeting you held last month.
I think everyone.
I was.
Made.
Uh.
Nick was not in attendance.
Nick was not here. Everyone else was here.
Alright, so I heard Pat make the motion. Do I hear a second? I hear Terry seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, starting with Kevin.
Aye. I abstain.
Thank you.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. You're welcome, and that brings us to staff report with amendments.
Okay, uh, I approved, an injured approval application for thirty-two Randy Road. They're doing some work in their backyard, uh, finally got headway on this one after we got a, uh, survey and, uh, other documents, uh, that I was holding out for, for an approval, um, to essentially show me where there's stockpiling soil and where drainage pipes are going and where the deck is extending to and so on and so forth. Um, do you guys have any questions?
Nope.
I do know.
Okay, uh, I can, um, uh, share those materials with you guys, so that way you know what I've reviewed.
You can put them not in the drive?
Um.
Put them in the website that Amanda made?
Um, we could, we.
I don't know, because it's not really.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, we could dedicate it.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
Okay. Uh. Thanks for sharing.
Yeah, you're welcome. And the other, uh, thing, items I have for you, uh, the Connecticut, uh, oh, geez.
You have CLAWS?
I wanna get that acronym correctly. Ah, the Connecticut Association of Conservation in the Wetlands Commissioners, there we go. They are having their annual conference. I believe it is scheduled for November fifteenth. If you want to go, please let me know, so I can get you registered ASAP. Already passed the early registration deadline, but you can sub-register. Um, uh, I would suggest you register on your own and just cite that you're a member of Bethels in the Wetlands Commissioners, so you're, you're eligible for the, um, the good standing member of discount and then give your receipts to me, so that way we can vote to pay up with your education and talent at the next meeting. The stand goes for CLAWS, which is the Connecticut Association of Wetland Scientists and their next conference is going to be held on, oh, geez. Uh, they're with me, they're with me, they're with me. Oh, they have a beginner wetland soil workshop scheduled for November seventh. Okay, same thing applies. You want to register, go to their website, make an account, let it know, and, or let me know and we can get that to pay for uh, the next meeting. Last thing is, uh, training incentives. I had mentioned this, I think, in the September meeting? Uh, do you guys have any feedback? Okay. Um, the last thing I would mention is, uh, election day is coming up for all of the commissioners that are, um, running for another term. I wish you all the best of luck and, um, if you have any questions, let me know. Um, but I hope to see, um, you know.
Our returning faces.
Right.
We hope to see them too.
Okay, and that's all I've got. Any questions for me?
No.
Okay.
Nothing from me.
Uh, yeah, Dave, actually, Dave, if it was possible, I had something I needed to ask you about after the meeting.
Okay. No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, commission comments. Did anyone want to review our regulations this evening? I know that that is generally a Nico discussion and he's not returned them tonight, but certainly the floor is open for anyone.
No, I'm good.
I'm okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, then I would like to open the floor for public comments. Anyone on the screen?
I don't see anyone on the screen, I'm sure.
Alright, hearing none? You don't count as being on the screen. You're on the commission. I'm just teasing. Um, okay, so then, you know what that means?
Yes.
Make a motion. Second.
You have to be very specific.
I'll make a motion to end this meeting at eight. Whenever it is.
Twenty-one. Sure. I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call a vote on the screen, Kevin?
Aye.
Nicholas? Pat?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I apologize for the internet, Kevin.